I'm none.
All right. Shall we open the Belvidere City Council meeting, regular meeting of March 18th, 2024? We'll call that meeting to order, please.
Albertini?
Here.
Burton. Burton is absent. Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Okay, if you'll join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our country, our families, our community, and our freedom. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members and for all the men and women veterans who have served and sacrificed throughout our nation's history. We ask that you bless them and their families. And tonight, Lord, we give thanks for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout our country who bravely serve our citizens, no matter what the call, and we pray for their safety and well-being. We pray for guidance this evening and that you give each of us compassion, patience, understanding, courage, and wisdom as we conduct our city's business here. We pray for these things in Christ's name. Amen. Okay, tonight we have three, I think, registered for public comment. First, we have John Albertini. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of you know me, but in case you don't, my name's John Albertini. I live here in Belvidere. The subject I'm speaking about tonight is the trash pickup we're working on. I received a couple of calls and one intense text. I don't know how to word it, but one 78-year-old gentleman says he's had the same garbage as far as he can remember, and he didn't understand why somebody was going to tell him who to use. He asked that we can try to, and I don't know whether this is possible, that we can have a public hearing on this matter, being it affects the whole city. I think before we vote on this, enforce this on the city or on the people of the city, that we try to do this. I mean, history dictates that we're going to try to have a public hearing. The seats will be empty, but at least we did our due diligence to try to be courteous to our citizens instead of just telling them what to do. The reason I base this on is a while back I had asked about how my park looked, where I live at Four Seasons, and how nice it looked and why the city couldn't look like that. And it was told to me that, well, the city can't tell the residents, like the park can, what to do. Well, if that's the case, then why are we telling them to get garbage? So I'd like to postpone the next week's vote on it and call for a public hearing on the matter first so that at least if citizens did want to voice their opinion, we could hear from them. That's all I have to say on the subject. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Next, we have Alderman Flurry.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I'm talking about the trash pickup. I had a few citizens contact me. Some weren't able to come tonight, so they asked that I would just speak on their behalf and ask a couple of questions. The first one just being, you know, that they just weren't aware that that was happening, that, you know, why is this happening so quickly? And as they talked to their neighbors, you know, not, obviously, not everyone watches the city council meetings, but they talked to their neighbors, they run over it, and the more they found out about it, the more they were less than thrilled about it. So, you know, just wanted to know why it was so quick. And I, you know, tried to explain the process that we will have a first reading tonight, and then we'll have a committee meeting, and then it'll be two weeks. We'll actually, we'll be some time for some citizens to come out and if they are concerned to, you know, please come down, whether they're for it or against it. That way, as a council, we can hear, you know, what their concerns are and, you know, know what to do going forward. But some of the specific questions they had, and just wanted to get those out there so we could get that in the RFIs as we're looking at this contract and going further. But one of their questions was, you know, the biggest problem is what if there's a problem with their garbage and their service? Who do they contact? How is that resolved? You know, currently, if you're not happy with your service, you know, you can obviously call them. If you're still unhappy, you can cancel that service and get another one. So what do you do when that option's taken away from you? The second question is in regards to this current, the one particular citizen. The way it works is they live here in the city, but the kids live out of town, but they've worked out a deal with a trash company that they can get a discounted rate because they're all using the same service. So what happens to that rate if they're forced to have one and their other kids on another one? Now their rate's going to go up even though they're out in the county, and it doesn't affect us as a city. We can't control that, but just that ability to kind of, I guess, kind of bundle their services. What can they do about that? Then also, you know, some companies require that you have to use paper sacks for yard waste. Others let you use a garbage can along, you put an extra that you know is yard waste. So with the current company that they're proposing with Rock River Disposal, what's their yard waste policy? Is it possibly used cans still, or does it have to be bags, or what's going on with that? And then the last thing, their concern was just kind of the process to stop one service and start a new one. So they currently have, and I'm sure most people do have, automatic bills coming out that come out on a certain time of the month, you know, ones are going to change over, and then how does that new service pick up? So I'm sure some of these are maybe easily answered right now or later, but, you know, can kind of be researched, but I think just a lot of citizens just have more concerns because they're telling us it's going to be this company where when you're calling and doing your own research, no different than when I, you know, moved back to the city. I just called the three places that were around, and we took the cheapest one, and we stayed with them because they continue to be the cheapest. So that was, you know, my decision as consumers. So just wanted to pass on some of those questions and some of the concerns of some of my constituents. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we have this evening here, Sherri Branson. Ms. Branson? Good evening.
Thank you. I'm going to try and keep this short and sweet. As many of you know, I serve on the county board, and I, in the past, was on the county board in the Health and Human Services Committee and the Board of Health. And I learned a lot about problems with our aquifers and the risk when Great Lakes Basin Railroad was trying to come through town back in about 2016. And things have not gotten better. If you look at this map that I left around here, I'm after two things. And I'm going to be back to go into that in more in depth at additional meetings. But I'm after two things. I want to protect our recharge areas so that we don't contaminate our water supply because we're high-risk. The I E P A designated that we are sensitive for groundwater protect, I'm sorry, sensitive for groundwater contamination and that we are to be prioritized for groundwater protection. Because of our geology, our soils are different in this county than the rest of the state. We're within one of four regions throughout the entire state that have that designation. And the other thing I want to do is I want to get three-dimensional mapping done so that we know where our aquifers actually are. They've never been mapped in this county. And the reason this is important, and the county board has asked me to go around and see if I can drum up support from various townships. The reason it's important is if you look at this map that I left on your desk, and I'm sorry this did not make it into your packet. I just got it Friday night. But if you look at the very top of it, on your far left is Winnebago County. The next square over is Boone County, and you see that little, that finger-like projection there? That is, that shows the impact on our aquifers from the way we are doing our development in Boone and Winnebago County. And the closer you get down to where this real dark red is, that's down in Will County, down by Joliet, that's what's called a cone of depression, and the aquifer has dropped over 800 feet. Now, I want to stress, we are not at critical stages in our county yet. But we have to start working on this because it takes about two years to get all the studies back so that we know how, what we need to do, and then do modeling to show where the flow would go. And in the meantime, we can be working on changing our best practices, methods, and tweaking them, and developing policies and procedures that can help to protect us. If you notice in this little finger-like, you know, it should be the darker blue, and it's turning into the lighter blue, and there's not a lot of colors in here before it gets into the red as you go south. So this, I think, is just a good, a good visual. It's a good visual tool to see what we're up against. And right now, we're not in the critical stage. We can fix this. And we can look at where we're doing our land use planning so that we're not overbuilding on risky soils. We can shift them to other soils. And I've reached out to the State Geological Survey Division, and they're working to help me to create a plan to come back here in a couple of meetings to give you some ideas and suggestions about what we can be doing differently. But in the meantime, I'm hoping to get support for getting started on the modeling because the State Geological Survey Division can fly over the counties and just do Winnebago, or Boone County. It's about half a million, just under half a million, and that would give us really, really good mapping. And so we can, we know what we're up against, and we need that data to really do this right. And we can have the growth. We can protect our aquifers from contamination because your recharge areas are the same as high-risk contamination areas. And we can do this smart, and you can get your cake and eat it too. That's the gist, but we need to get started on this. And I'll go into more in-depth with you at other meetings. If you want to give me a call, I can meet with you, and I can go over your packets, and that will explain a lot without eating a lot of board time. Okay, any, any?
Okay.
I think Marcia's got something.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So you're going to be asking us for funding on this?
It's, it's complicated. Funding is always complicated. I've got three different sources that are reaching out trying to find grants. In your packet, I've included a copy of what the county got for ARPA funding. And the county is also wanting to, to expand a lot of buildings because we're bursting at the seams. So they want to put a lot of money into these expansions. And so this project is on that ARPA funding wish list for the county, but the county has also instructed me to ask other municipalities what they can kick in or if they can kick in. And I understand that not everybody can, but I'm told to ask, so.
So that's what I was looking at. You guys in the county, I think, I mean, I'm all for this mapping and, you know, how it's described in this packet is like an MRI of the earth, right? Which is great, and it's past time for it, I believe. But to me, this is a county thing, and when I looked at you guys' ARPA funding, you guys still have like over, as, I mean, the new quarterly report was due in January, but at this time, you still had $7,680,000 left? Wasn't ARPA funding supposed to be used by a specific date?
You have until the end of the year to allot it for what it's going to be, and that number has dropped because other things have come out of that. If you look at the top of that, that is the ARPA, or the ARPA letter from November. It's down to about $6 million. And so the county wants to put some into that, or they want to put a lot of it into the building issue. I also want them to try and put some of it into this as well. And I am one vote out of 12. We'll see what happens.
I understand. Like, I think that this would be a good use of some of those ARPA funds, just so the county board's aware.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree, but my instructions were to talk to the municipalities, see what I can do, see if I can find grants for it. And I've reached out to Soil and Water. I've reached out to Conservation District. They're searching for grants. I've taken it to the county's grant writer. She's searching for them, and we searched for them when I was on the board back in 1617. And we searched in depth. We even had R1 searching, and we did not find any. And we applied for some, and we just didn't get them. So it's a work in progress. It's a work in progress. But again, if you call me, I'll talk to you over the phone, or I'll meet you, and I can explain in 15 minutes your packet that'll take, you know, umpteen hours to read through. Give you the Cliff Notes version. And my number is 815-601-2356. Any other questions?
Anybody else? Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Branson.
Thank you.
In your packet, just to make sure, Ms. Branson did approach me regarding, regarding the information. I wanted you to have it, so it is, it is in your packet. I assume when she comes back, she will be referencing that material. So if you keep it maybe close by, that would be good.
I also got, I forgot to tell you, I've got a email back from Jason Thompson, State Geological Survey Division, that answers a lot of the questions that you and I had talked about. And I left it on your desk.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I believe that's all we have for public comment. Okay. Thank you. Item 4A, we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of March 4, 2024, as presented. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Snow, second. By Alderman Stevens, thank you. If there's any corrections, any concerns regarding those minutes that you have in front of you, speak up. Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes of March 4, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. Motion passed. Thank you. Item 5, public hearing. We have none. Item 6, excuse me, special messages and proclamations. We have Growth Dimensions. Pam Fettis is here this evening. Pam, welcome.
Thank you for your time this evening. In front of you, I shared some new, you know, data that we wanted to put in a different, presented a little bit different, hopefully more clear about the impact. We did some time after time. So since the beginning of this year, we've had almost 200 contacts. We've had 61 new business projects in the pipeline, 56 that are existing projects in the pipeline. And we broke it up based on the phase, and this was similar to what we had talked about last year. And if you want me to, we can add what those were. Stage one is really that initial contact. And stage two was more your meeting, due diligence. Stage three, they've made a commitment or in construction phase. So I wanted to share with you that breakdown. Also, our website visits from January 1st to date in comparison from 2024 to 2023, you can see how many visits that we've had already this year has exceeded last year's amount. And the webpage views as well. Our project referral sources, just to blow a breakdown of where we get our initial contact for the projects. We get primarily, most of them, from the business or business representatives, meaning site selectors or accountants or lawyers that are representing these businesses. Others might be, could be the schools, higher education, could be the airport, could be other resources. We have municipalities, government, and then we have the broker as well as the state in Intersect, Illinois, which is the marketing arm for Illinois. And just some of the highlights of these projects that we've been working on since, I didn't want to kind of repeat from last month, so I've just shared with you some new information. Project Apollo, high-tech manufacturer, that's interested in a spot in U.S. This is a $900 million investment, as well as 900 jobs. We are working with Sky Label Logistics that is looking to have a very aggressive expansion project in Illinois for their logistics company. And then we have Project Z that is looking at opportunities in Boone County for retail location. We also have another project that's looking at consumer, manufacturing consumer goods, another one biopharmaceutical company. And then we also have a, you know, a company that was out of Poplar Grove that is now secured a location on Business 20, and they're enhancing a location for landscape garden and retail facility. And that's Arte Verde. And I apologize if I'm saying that wrong. Fiesta Market is also looking to upgrade their refrigeration systems, and they're processing applying for loans and through the state and as well as grants. And also working with the city on Wing Snob. And there's also a number of restaurant franchises that we've been speaking to about a location in Belvidere and Poplar Grove. Some other projects that we've, you know, had secure, we're working with. Many of you know MRS, Walmart, Parishable Distribution Center, Five Mines Brewery, Club Car Wash, Dottie Pancakes, and Duncan Donuts. We're also helping planning and executing a conference, an expo called the ACE Conference on May 23rd at the Embassy Suites in Rockford. And we're looking to provide existing and aspiring entrepreneurs with resources in order to start and grow their businesses. So a lot of businesses go out of business in the first two years, and our goal is to give them what the resources they need in order to stay in business and flourish. Following that will be a ceremony for the Iger Labs Innovation Award. So we'll be sharing more information as it comes. And then we're also working with four landowners and investors potentials and opportunities here in Boone County. And a lot of the emphasis was on retail and housing. So I wanted to kind of share those, that detail.
Any questions for Ms. Fettis? Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. I just wanted to share. Site Selection Magazine is an international industry-leading business publication, and it has released its annual corporate expansion and relocation rankings, naming Illinois number two in the nation for corporate projects. The state ranks number two in the nation for corporate expansions and relocations for the second year in a row, with 552 business expansions or relocation projects in 2023, up from 487 in 2022. And Illinois also placed number two in projects per capita, up from number four the previous year. So the, let me get to where I need to be. To qualify, projects must meet one or more of these criteria. Investments of a million or more, creation of 20 or more new jobs, or 20,000 square feet or more of new space. So with your help, Belvidere has certainly added to and helped Illinois achieve this ranking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on, we have, we have anybody from the library? Yeah, we do. Mr. Orivalo, how are you?
Good, how are you this evening?
Welcome. With the library.
Yes, should I stay where I live? Stay where I live?
No. Just who you represent.
Hello, everyone. My name is Daniel Orivalo. I'm here on the behalf of the Idaho Public Library. For the programs, Spring Program Guide is out. A lot of exciting programs. All programs are free to anyone that, but require some registration in advance. The pamphlet's out in front of everyone, hopefully. I didn't miss anybody. Our annual Peeps Diorama contest starts this week. Anyone can create a Peeps display and drop it off at the library, starting March 20th, and the public will vote for the winners who will receive a prize. The Friends of the Library worked of getting us grants from the Boone County Community Foundation to funding code bots for children. We happen to have 10 of these that will be used in the coding programs. We also received a grant from the Boone County Home of H People in a relevant association towards providing services, materials for elderly. These funds will be used to purchase large print paperbacks to our bookmobile. We will visit the assisted living and retirement homes, and the town and many residents have asked these paperbacks instead of hardcover books that we currently have. They're not as heavy, and they're easier to see as well. Some of these funds will also be used for small drop boxes in our assisted living. And the bookmobile will begin requesting materials to be delivered to the facilities. A one-team member will deliver them at our usual staffs. The drop boxes will be placed in a facility for residents to return materials in drop-in request forms, and our team will empty them during the visits, saving time for the staff at the facility. And also the special needs from the BHS will be, begin volunteering for work at the library for the next month. They'll be dusting once a week, cleaning tables and organizing, and other things. We have three new short-term workers from workforce. They will perform all regular duties of circulation clerk from their contract term. And also for our maintenance, is our water softener went out, and we had to replace it, and the cost was $1,400. We also had, we sprung a new leak in the sprinkler system downstairs in the public restrooms. Nelson came out for the merchant repair, a total of $1,900. Nelson advised that we either replace entire piping in the new section of the building or plan a budgeting for the repairs for every year for the next five years. It will seem inferior materials we were using everything in the beginning to rust. We're not the only ones with issues. It seems to be common with the systems installed in the eighties. And also, local artist Brett Whitaker will be painting new murals in our children's department this week. Brett was born and raised in Belvidere, and is a well-known artist and mural painter. Some of the children's areas may be closed off while he paints to ask staff for assistance. And that's, hopefully that didn't go fast for anybody. If not, can always go back and repeat everything. That's my update from the library.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Orivalo? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it. Okay. We have item seven, moving on, approval of expenditures. First... We have item seven, moving on, approval of expenditures. First, we have approval of general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,482,545.76. Those have been included in your packet, and could I have a motion to accept these? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderwoman Mohal, thank you. Any questions regarding the expenditures? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So, I have, I guess, some for everyone. Starting with the general on page two, the CTEC data solutions for cameras at City Hall, was this included in our new security upgrade?
That was the security upgrade, yes.
Thank you. And then, for Chief Woody, page 10. The KP Counseling LTD for the wellness checks for $1,540, is any of that reimbursable at all through insurance?
No, because technically, these are not medical evaluations. They're simply just wellness checks where the officers go in, and they're able to talk about whatever is on their mind at the time, and it's not associated with any type of diagnosis which would be required for insurance.
Thank you. That's all I had for you, Chief. Chief Shadle, page 15. Oh, I did have one more for you. I'm sorry, Chief Woody. I don't know why it's not on here. Oh, page 13, the KUNIS. There's a lot on there. LOF, is that oil changes and tune-ups? Because I, like, when do we do tune-ups and oil changes?
Yes, it's lube, oil, and filter. So, it's the oil, the filter, and then any lubrication that they have to do.
Okay, but we don't do, like, spark plugs and distributors and those types of tune-ups?
Yes, ma'am, as needed.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering what the LOF was for. Okay, Sean, page 15, the city of Rockford that is under repairs and maintenance for ongoing maintenance for
Yep, so to explain that one, the easiest way to explain it is, anything that our street department can't do, we have Rockford Fire do it. And so, they have a garage, and they have full-time staff that only work on fire engines, and their rates are very favorable compared to commercial rates. And then, the second thing about it is, they're very, very fair with hours. Like, if something, oftentimes, they spend more time diagnosing stuff than they actually bill for. So, that's the advantage of working with them. And one of the reasons why we chose a Pierce engine is that their fleet is Pierce, and so now, they'll have a lot of parts on hand, and repairs will be faster for the new 101 that we purchased in general there. So, the reason why, there's two reasons why that bill is high, and part of that is, some of those parts were actually ordered last fiscal year. And so, some of these repairs, so it's really, it's about a year and a half of what they had found. So, every year, they go in for the pump test and the aerial test, and then they find any deficiencies, and then they mark them down, and then they have to be repaired. A lot of that, not a lot of it, but some of it started last year, and they just didn't bill for it as well. And last year, I looked up, we were 14,000 under budget in repair and maintenance, and part of that was because some of this would have normally been billed last year, but they just kept the ticket open and then billed all at once. And if anybody is interested in seeing a detailed breakdown of that invoice, or has any further questions, I'd be definitely happy to email it to you.
Thank you. I guess that's all I had for you specifically. I do have one for, and I'm not sure who answers this, the Police and Fire Commission. On page 18, there are, I guess it's the law enforcement sergeant test, and then there are captain and lieutenant promotional exams, and those total upwards of $16,500. Can you guys talk a little bit about where that money goes and why it costs so much to promote people?
I can speak on behalf of the Police Department, and I think the Fire Department's fairly similar. We use a testing service to maintain objectivity and give the, not only appearance, but actual, so there isn't any favoritism, and it's an independent contractor through COPS and Fire Testing Service. And ultimately, they come in, and they provide the written examination, they proctor that, and then they also do a oral examination with all of the applicants as well. They bring in their own command personnel to evaluate each of the potential candidates. And then, there's obviously an associated charge with that.
Okay, so you don't really have say in who gets promoted? It's not your call, it's their call?
Not in that portion of the testing process. There are other portions where the sergeants, as well as the command staff, get to do a merit-based point system, which is based off the last three years of evaluations and feedback from the command staff, as well as the supervisors. And then, there's also seniority. So, they get a certain number of points, over up to 10 points for the amount of years of service that they have.
Ours is very similar. We just contractually are obligated to do it this way, and it's also with the rules of the Police and Fire Commission. Eighty percent of the 100 points, so 80 points, are based on the written test, which is 40, and then the assessment center. So, the assessment center, it's so expensive because it's a multi-day process, and what they do for evaluation is they run them, each person through two different exercises. And one person, so we had 10 people test, nine test last, nine or 10 tested. So, it was, the, at the assessment, they sit down and they have a tactical exercise. So, they actually run a scenario, and they run command, and then they get graded on that. And then, they also run, like, a staff meeting or a coaching exercise, and they're looking for things like, do they support management, all those things. So, they actually grade them independently, and like Chief said, it's independent. If one of the chiefs or one of the assessors know anybody, then they don't, the testing agency won't let them come and assess there. So, I did get two bids for that, because I looked at COPS and Fire. We had used RMA probably the last three or four times, and we'd generally been happy they do a really good job. And just to make sure that they were close on price, both companies estimated about $12,000 for that, and the invoice came in a little under that.
Just one more thing to add. Chief Shadle touched on it. It is kind of dependent on how many people test as well, so.
Thank you. And then, I had one for Director Countryman. Page, page 19, RNA Maintenance, Electrical Inspector for $1,673. I was under the impression, we just had, like, a couple retirees to do our plumbing and electrical inspectors. RNA Maintenance, is that a company?
That's for our electrical inspector. That's his monthly salary.
Lawson Products, miscellaneous fasteners, and I guess hydraulic hoses for $8,114.35?
Yes, that's for the hose that actually lets us build our own hose kits. It's for the, the male, put the ends to cut them. We had used, we've utilized two different contractors or area suppliers in the past. Both of them have closed up shop now, and so now, we can do them all in-house with the products that we got through Lawson.
Okay, because I just, I noticed on the previous page, 22, there was two entries for Hydraulic Supply Company, 393 and 568, for hydraulic hose assemblies, I guess. So, that's why I was just confused at why that was such a high number for over $8,000.
Typically, it's nowhere near that, but now, this is the actual machine that lets us do our assemblies in-house. So, we still have to buy supplies and stuff for that, but we can make them our own now.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, I had one on page 35, under capital projects. I was just wondering what Cordray Brothers, it's listed under miscellaneous for $8,565.07.
That would be for sand, gravel, stuff that we use in-house, the supplies. We just paid $4,000 capital as opposed to line item expense. That's the capital. That would be probably for the public improvement fund, I would guess? Or is that just capital?
Capital, 41, yeah, capital.
I'd have to look for specific to see what project that was tied to, but that's what it's for, materials and concrete.
So, do we just get that as needed, or do we, like, get bulks of that and store it and then use it?
We do both. We do as needed if we have a specific project that will come up that way, or if we have, we, both water, sewer, and street, maintain stockpiles down at the street department yards, and as we utilize those, and we'll go fill those, usually typically on rainy days or off days.
Thank you. I'm happy for the opportunity to go through these. I learned a lot. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor then, and a second. That motion being approval of the general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,482,545.76. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And then, also, we would have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $336,072.91. That is also in your packet for review. And if I could have a motion to that effect, please. Thank you. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, and a second. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. If there's any questions regarding the expenditures, we'll hear them now. Okay, seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor of water and sewer expenditures in the amount of $336,072.91. Will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, items A through H have been placed on file at the city clerk's office. And item I, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole, building, planning, zoning, public works of March 11, 2024. Motion by Alderman Flurry, and a second by Alderman Snow. Any discussion, any correction, any concerns on those minutes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And we have item nine on the next page, which is for a second reading this evening, that being, that being an ordinance amending section 114-231, and appendix A of the Belvedere Municipal Code to modify water and sewer rates. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman McGee, second. By Alderwoman Frank, thank you. And I think Brent, Mr. Anderson, Director Anderson, had placed a memo or some information regarding what that, how that plays out regarding the increase. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, just a copy of what was back in the packet for the, for committee and council prior to the development of the ordinance, just outlining where we're at balance-wise and the increase, the phase, first step of the increase on this water side. This proposed to be 15 cents per 100 cubic feet, which if passed, will result in an increase of about $1.20 per month, or 4 cents a day on the sanitary sewer side. And that's, again, the first phase on the sewer side will be a 20 cent per 100 cubic feet increase, or $1.60 per month on that. So, total combined of phase one, if council approves this ordinance, would be $33.60 a year for water sewer rates as an increase.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any questions? Any questions for Mr. Anderson or anybody else? Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this takes care of the deficit. Do you anticipate anything in the future, and if so, when?
Well, this will take, this will be the first step in that, if you go back to the memo, copy on your desk is recommended for the next step of the increase, approximately about six months throughout the year. And then, that's on the, both water and sewer, and then on the sewer side, again, in the memo is a third increase that's going to be required, and that's going to be based on what the final cost is and what our payback obligation will be on our 2018 wastewater treatment plant loan project that is finishing up at this time. So, once that, once those are in place, if those are all in place, that should bring us back to where hopefully we should be, based on, based on water uses and consumption. Hopefully, as everybody hopes, Stellantis will be back up and running sooner than later, because that's a big, a big hit on our system. So, if that happens, as well as the increased activity that we're seeing with those, then I would foresee no increases in the near term as far as that goes. There's always things that come up. I'll fill you in on more details at our next committee meeting about a sanitary sewer issue that, that, that came to light the end of last week. That's going to require some emergency repairs. So, barring any of that kind of stuff going on, we should be in good shape for the near term.
Thank you. Alderman Albertini? Thank you, Mayor. I have one quick question, Brent. Why are we doing this in two stages instead of just all at once?
Typically, in the past, we've done that to, so it doesn't hit everybody upfront. We could certainly do that, council's desire, but my experience has been in the past, with the rate increases, we've always phased them in over the season, and that seems to be better receptive.
Okay, thank you. I had asked Mr. Anderson to, as well, to stagger these. You know, I think it is, he did bring up a good point, that with Stellantis being not using anything, it doesn't work in the city of Belvedere's favor. We have abundance of water, and we would like to sell it. When we sell it to big users, obviously, we have a economic that makes a huge, it shows that our economy is, is sound. When we lose one, or when they idle, then it also shows that, you know, we are not selling as much water. The big sales, DFA, Dean Dairy Farmers of America, and of course, Stellantis are our two biggest users. And as soon as I do believe Stellantis comes on board, I think that that picture will probably clear up, not only in the short term, but in the long term. So, unfortunately, we do have So unfortunately, we do have to supply water, we do have to supply maintenance, we do have to, when you flush the toilet and you turn the spigot on, we do have to be able to provide water and sewer. And it hasn't been, it hasn't been probably, you could say, a very good time, but I think this is the best way to, to deal with it, and in the future, I believe it gets better. Any other questions, any other concerns? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment or the motion on the floor for ordinance 664H, that being an ordinance amending section 114-231 and appendix A of the Belvidere Municipal Code to modify water and sewer rates, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item 10, new business. We have...
Well, I take that back.
What do you have?
Nevermind.
Six in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. We have item 10, new business, item A, ordinance 665H, that is for a first reading this evening, and ordinance budgeting for all corporate purposes for the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025. That will be back in front of the council for a second reading. We have item B, ordinance 666H, for a first reading, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow a mural within the central business district located at 315 South State Street. And again, that will be back to the council for a second reading in two weeks. We have item C, ordinance 667H, for a first reading this evening, that being an ordinance amending section 110-91 for stop streets of the city of Belvidere, of Belvidere Municipal Code to add Franklin Street and at West Perry Street and West Perry Street at King Street as stop streets. Again, that will be back for a second reading in two weeks. We have item D, ordinance 66H, 66H, for a first reading, that being an ordinance amending Article II regarding refuse collectors and collection of Chapter 94 Solid Waste of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code and authorizing the execution, execution of a residential solid waste disposal agreement. That will be back in two weeks. We have ordinance, we have item E, ordinance 669H, as a first reading tonight as well, that being an ordinance vacating an abandoned portion of Irene Road in the city of Belvidere. And again, that will be back to you in two weeks. Item F, we have resolution 2024-4, that being a resolution directing the planning department to publish the zoning map of the city of Belvidere. And I would need a motion to that effect if you so desire. Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you, and second by Alderwoman Mahal, thank you. Any questions, any comments, any concerns regarding the motion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor then, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And moving on, we have motions forwarded from committee of the whole dated February 26, 2024, and March 11, 2024. Motion's out of committee, motions out of public safety. Chairman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to approve the street closure request from the Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce for State Street from Lincoln Avenue to First Street, as well as Logan Avenue between State and Main Street, and First Street from State to Garfield Avenue on Friday, December 6, 2024, between 3:00 PM and 9:30 PM for hometown Christmas.
Okay, thank you. And we have that motion out of committee. Is there any discussion, any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Okay. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Chairman Flurry. We'll move to a motion out of public works. Chairman Snow?
Thank you, Your Honor. B, motion to enter in an agreement with the compliance engine by Bryce here to the, to manage our backflow program.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions or comments regarding the motion out of committee?
Your Honor?
Alderman Snow?
Just for public, any public's knowledge, this is for the fire, anything that needed the inspections on sprinklers, we'll say.
It's for backflow prevention devices, and currently, there's 1,004 of them that we have to track throughout the city. And this, basically, Bryce will do that on our behalf going forward.
And these are both commercial and residential, correct, Director?
Everybody that has a backflow device, correct.
Thank you. All right, we have that motion out of committee. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, thank you. That's, Chairman Snow, that's all we have, and we'll flip to the last page, motions, motions of finance and personnel. Chairwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to accept grant funds from the Illinois Department of Commerce and economic opportunity in the amount of $1 million for work related to the rehabilitation and expansion of municipal parking lot seven, radios for the police department, and concrete barriers for use by the street department, and to authorize the mayor and finance director to execute any documentation necessary to facilitate the receipt of grant funds.
Okay, thank you. If there's any questions or comments, feel free to ask. Okay. Hearing none, thank you. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, thank you. Before we move off of that, I just wanted to ask the finance director, now that was, those were funds that were, I wanted to thank Alderman, or Alderman, I just demoted him. Senator, excuse me, Senator Stottlemann, correct?
That's correct.
And, you know, so I guess I'm, I am grateful for anybody that wants to help the city. These are tough economic times for us. A million dollars goes a long way, the municipal parking lot. I think when it's done, will help our downtown businesses. The radios for the police department are essential as well for public safety, along with the concrete barriers for use by the street department, so that we can provide as much as we possibly can regarding the route, parade route that somebody may decide to enter. And we've seen how that can work. I think it was Waukesha, Wisconsin, that had a, had an individual that ended up crashing the parade, Christmas parade. And so I think these are all great needs for the city of Belvidere, particularly for public safety and, and also for downtown. So publicly, I want to thank Senator Stottlemann. I appreciate the help, we appreciate the help. Item D, Chairwoman Frank?
Thank you, and Mayor. Motion to accept grant funds from the Illinois Department of Commerce and economic opportunity in the amount of $1 million to be used by Midwest Refrigerated Services towards the racking system in the facility currently under construction on Irene Road, and to authorize the mayor and finance director to execute any documentation necessary to facilitate the receipt of grant funds, including but not limited to a participation agreement between the city and Midwest Refrigerated Services LLC.
Thank you, Chairwoman Frank. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion out of committee? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, and as long as I want to, as long as I am able to accept help, I wanted to thank DCEO, but I also wanted to thank Governor Pritzker. I think this came down to, as I had said before, down to, although we'd been dealing, we had started this process, Finance Director Hanson, along with Public Works Director Anderson, city attorney, we had dealt with this since August, and it came down to actually the Wednesday before Friday's deadline for them to either make a decision whether or not they wanted to, whether or not it was going to be feasible for them to locate in the city of Belvidere, go north to, to Wisconsin. With the staff's help, everybody's help, and with Governor Pritzker's help, we were able to secure that million dollars, certainly that was given towards, given to Midwest Refrigerated Services for them to locate their business and jobs in the city of Belvidere. So certainly, I'm grateful for that help as well. And Chairwoman Frank, item E?
Thank you again, Mayor. Motion to accept grant funds from the Illinois Law Enforcement's Training and Standards Board in the amount of $283,350 to be used for gym equipment, virtual training equipment, wellness checks for officers, and stipends for officers, and to authorize the mayor and finance director to execute any documentation necessary to facilitate the receipt of grant funds.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions or comments regarding, floor is open. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, and on this one, I do want to comment that I think law enforcement in general, I've said it many times, that I think they've taken an unfair, a very unfair hit these last two, three, four years, and I think this helps to recognize and show that we need them. And I know that, I know Chief may have some comments, so Chief Woody?
Yeah, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Shannon for her assistance. Deputy Chief Wallace's primary responsibility is grant writing for our department, and him and Shannon collaborate to make sure that we can bring grant dollars to the city, which allows us to get some of those needed things that maybe we're not able to budget for. So I wanted to thank those two and the council for your support in this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hanson. Thanks, thank you, Chief, and please thank Deputy Chief Wallace. All right? Alderman Albertini? Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Chief Woody and his police department for doing such a fine job. We had a problem over at Four Seasons. They cleared it up in no time at all. It was about car thefts and break-ins and mischievous, and they took care of it in a timely manner, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for that, I have no doubt. Thank you, Chief. Okay, that's all we have on the agenda. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion to adjourn by Alderwoman Frank, and a second by Alderman Albertini. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? All right, for the record, we adjourned at 7:05 PM. Thank you, everybody, for your time.